We call the meeting to order and thank everyone for their attendance. Look forward to another great meeting. We will begin our briefings with the Virginia Beach Development Authority Annual Report. Dot Wood, we're so glad to see you and look forward to the presentation.
Thank you, sir. I'm certainly happy to be here and I appreciate being reappointed to the Development Authority.
We appreciate your service.
Thank you, sir. We had another very successful year, trailing only Fairfax County in the Commonwealth. So we're here to brag. You don't mind us sharing good news, do you?
We love good news.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and members of City Council. As Chair of the Development Authority, I'm excited to report to you our city's economic development successes for the past year. The guidance from my favorite attorney, Alex Stiles, and our favorite Deputy City Manager, Ron Williams, have certainly helped us to have a great year. And along with Warren Harris and Mark Warner and the other members of the Development Authority staff that are here, I'd like to first-
Glad to have all of y'all here.
Thank you. I'd like to first introduce our newest member, Lisa, watch it, almost fell. Lisa Murphy, Lisa is a-
Don't watch this, everybody.
Is the, Lisa is the, is with Leclair Ryan and her son Jack Will is one of your wife's, your students.
Oh, my goodness.
He's four years old and he's a happily, goes to Stratford happily.
Good luck to him.
We trailed only Fairfax this year in the Commonwealth. These numbers don't reflect everything that's happened to the city, but they reflect the projects that we touched. Total announcements increased from 38 to 42 this past year, all but two of these occurring in one of our target industries. These result in the creation of 1,548 new jobs and $173 million in new capital investment. One of the important tools that you have given us is the Economic Development Investment Program, which can provide grants to expanding and new companies based on their performance and creating new, higher-paying jobs and bringing more investment to our city. During fiscal year 2017, the Authority approved 13 EDIP grants totaling $1.4 million. These performance grants leverage more than $40 million in new capital investment and the creation or retention of nearly 700 jobs. The average salary for these jobs created by the companies receiving the EDIP accounts was $54,000. For comparison, the average starting salary in Virginia Beach as a wage is $40,000. We also administer other initiatives for the city. I'm sure you've all been to Farm Bureau, Virginia Veterans Home, Fire-
United Home Loan-
Oh, good, it's up there, okay. We have been 26, you believe, $26.7 in direct revenue to the city since we've had this. This year, we generated $1.8 million in revenue with more than 300,000 patrons attending 32 events. And we reinvested $535,000 back into the arena to keep it up to date. In construction has begun on Phase 7 of Town Center. I don't know if you've seen this building coming out of the ground, but it's amazing. We have leveraged about $4.50 in new direct private investment for every $1 in public infrastructure. We also have Zider's American Dream Theater that's coming in that building, and that's going to be for new and emerging artists. And the Virginia Beach National Golf Course generated $149,000 in rent this past year. So I hope you see, our city continues to perform very well in meeting one of the council's top priorities, expanding and creating a sustainable economy. Now, I'd like to focus on a few of the high-impact projects which are helping us position Virginia Beach for the next generation of residents and businesses and to keep Virginia Beach as America's greatest city. Last year, we reported the announcement of Telefonica, Microsoft, and Facebook, yeah, Facebook, to bring the two fastest data communication cables in the world to Virginia Beach. One is coming from Spain and the other from Rio de Janeiro, Brazil. The activity since then has been phenomenal, to say the least. Global Links contracted to purchase 10 acres from the Development Authority in corporate lending. Telx is nearing completion of a 24,000-square-foot cable landing station in corporate lending. And later this week, we're excited to tell you that Virginia Beach will be announced as the cables by Microsoft in their meeting in Williamsburg. And I hope someone can be there, will be there.
The mayor's on stage.
The mayor's on stage with us.
I'm a little bit out of my league with who I'm on the stage with, but I'm there.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. We are really, truly, a digital port city now. Can you believe that we have Microsoft, we're sitting here talking about Microsoft and Facebook? And, gosh, when I first moved to Virginia Beach, that certainly wouldn't have been, of course, we were lucky to have cars in those years. The Authority and staff sincerely appreciate the support and leadership by the Council for the Virginia Beach Bio Initiative, especially with the transfer of land to support the region's first bioscience business park. We were excited that the Governor made the decision to locate the 120-bed Veterans Care Center in Virginia Beach. The partnership with Tidewater Community College that launched our Bio Accelerator continues to produce results. We have Metro Bonics, I guess headquartered in Spain, announced their decision to open their first U.S. research facility in Virginia Beach. We also hosted the Virginia Bio Biannual Conference in the resort area, bringing 250 of the Commonwealth's top business leaders to Virginia Beach. Ninety percent of all Virginia Beach businesses employ 50 or fewer people, and your economic development team continues to reach out and strengthen this bedrock of our economy. Over 1,200 people attended the One Million Cups Entrepreneurial Education Series last year, and 1,100 more attended one of the nine events hosted by the Department of Economic Development for its small women and minority-owned business community. The outreach performed by staff is producing results, too, as more than one-third of all business startups in Hampton Roads take place in Virginia Beach. Between 2013 and 2017, the department announced 43 projects by SWAM certified and companies, resulting in the creation of 740 new jobs. Of course, workforce development remains one of the most critical components of your economic development program, and Virginia Beach continues to be recognized as one of the leaders among the local economic development organizations in the country in this focus area. Staff worked closely with TCC and several of our local manufacturers in launching and marketing new apprenticeship and certification programs. We helped eight companies serve 46 apprenticeships. Staff continues to work closely with TCC's Center for Workforce Solutions, providing 22 custom training programs for 263 employees. Through its partnership with Virginia Jobs Investment Program, the city helped leverage nearly $16 million in new capital investment and dedicated training assistance for over 300 local employees. Another exciting part of our projects is the Growth Smart. It's just a wonderful program trying to help the youngest of children be successful. We have a new program that's just starting that, I think the mothers wear a bracelet like a Fitbit, and they can tell how often they talk to their children and to see how successful they are. It's amazing. We have 125 volunteers served 300, 3,200 hours reading to first graders in local public schools, and more than 1,500 children, families, and community partners came out to Mount Trashmore to support the healthy development of our children. The program's impact on our local childcare system continues to expand. In August of 2016, the Virginia Quality 2.0 System was launched, helping 24 of our local early care and education providers improve quality services for children. Our next generation is looking bright with these young children. The city's partnership with the U.S. Navy continued its long record of success this past year, and our mayor was really very instrumental in helping with the Ola, the Keeping Oceana Here, and he's always at the meetings and working with the projects. We received the 2016 Community Economic Development Award of Excellence from the Commonwealth of Virginia and the Southern Economic Development Council. Seven businesses were able to invest more than $12.6 million to continue the growth in our city. Global Trade remains big business for Virginia Beach, and our connectivity to the rest of the world expanded this past year. Not only have the new subsea cables transformed us into a digital port city, but traditional connections have made possible the growth of our international business community. Three projects in particular, Steel, Sunrise Global, and Uplay resulted in more than 500,000 square feet of vacant industrial space being occupied. The U.S. remains a destination for international business investment, and we thank Council for your continued support of our global business programs. These accomplishments don't just happen. Your economic development team, along with our strategic partners in City Hall, the region, and state, worked tirelessly to spread the positive messages about Virginia Beach. This past year, staff made more than 750 direct existing industry contacts, as well as conducted 95 marketing events here in the U.S. and overseas. Through work with our ad agency, Auto Design, the department's marketing garnered additional awards of excellence from International Economic Development Council and other organizations. We may do things a little differently, but we, our results are real. Together, we are preparing Virginia Beach for success, not just today, not just for ourselves, but for the future. Before I close, please let me thank the fellow members of the Development Authority who share your commitment to excellence and pride in our city. Lisa's here today representing the other nine, 10 members. And as I extend special thanks and appreciation to Warren Harris, Mark, and all of the members of our staff, we really appreciate what you do for keeping Virginia Beach growing. It was a great year for Virginia Beach, and we look forward to working together with Council and every department to ensure our city is ready for the next generation. Thank you for your leadership and support.
Thank you very much, Dot.
I have a few questions that I had and I have answers for. Mr. Moss sent us some questions.
Okay.
The first one was respect to conflicts. Going forward, we have asked the City Attorney's Office to conduct additional conflict of interest training for the entire board. We will continue to work closely with staff to identify any potential conflicts presented by matters before the Authority. We take conflicts of interest incredibly seriously, and we do all we can to prevent issues in the future.
Thank you, Dot.
And as far as the live stream of our meetings, John, you said it was pretty simple. I don't know how we do it, but we would certainly welcome if you could tell us how to do it.
Right, while we get with the city manager, we can make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Dot? We thank you-
Thank you, sir.
Very much, all the board members, and we thank the staff. You know, we got the greatest economic development staff there is around, and we're very proud of you for what you all accomplished.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Okay, we're going to the Homeless Strategic Plan, Andy Friedman. Dave, you want to introduce or can Andy just-
Yes, sir. Members of Council, as we enter the City Managers' briefings, we've got three information briefings and one directional briefing. And we'll commence with, once we do a swap-out here, Andy's got a couple of boards he wants to put up here, and we're going to begin with the Homeless Strategic Plan. Andy Friedman, our Director of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation.
Thank you very much.
Andy, glad to have you.
Thank you, members of Council. It's my pleasure to be here to talk to you about an update to our strategic plan, which we're now calling a "Community of One," which is making homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring. And I do need the clicker, if someone can grab that for me. And with me today are the representatives of our governing board, who are going to say, one of them's going to say a few words. Todd Walker is the Vice Chair of our governing board, and Tim McCarthy is the Chair. And Todd's going to say a few words about the governing board, so I'll just-
Todd, we're glad to have you. And we're sorry y'all are all jumbled up there.
Thank you, Mayor Sessom.
Glad to have you.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. Hey, how you doing, City Manager? So, just wanted to just briefly touch on the Beach Governing Board and what we are. We're HUD required entity that makes funding and ranking decisions about HUD and state-funded, state-approved, state-provided funding. And so, last month, we had non-conflicted members of our governing board get together to rank some of our HUD proposals that totaled about $1.6 million last year for homeless services in our city. The governing board is endorsed by City Council, provides recommendations to staff and council about homeless policies and plans, which is why we're here today. And lastly, membership from city, faith, school system, nonprofits, formerly homeless, and regional partners. So basically, we're a well-winded group. We have voices that come from every part of our homeless response system and truly make what the program, our strategic plan, is being called, a "Community of One."
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so this is an information-only briefing. This is an update to the adopted plan, and we're going to come back and, for you to consider voting on this plan on October 17th. Before that, we're going to ask our governing board to vote on it and recommend it to you on September 26th. I'm going to go, I want to go over some things about understanding homelessness and the system that we have, and then overview parts of the plan, and then, when we come back in October, we can go into more detail on the plan as needed. So we want to start with a story about a person named Leela, who we have had a good outcome of her story, but her words were homelessness doesn't discriminate, anyone's life could change in a heartbeat. And this is illustrated by her own story. She and her husband had a home, but they lost their home in 2001, moved between hotels. She had three additional episodes of homelessness. Her husband then passed away, she got sick and had breast cancer, and she was able to win her bout with cancer. And we'll come back to her story in a minute. So in order to understand homelessness, it's important to remember that there's not just one cause, there's many causes. Job loss is just one of them, but mental illness, family breakup, and high costs of housing or health care can all contribute. And people move in and out of homelessness on a regular basis. There's not just a set of people who we can house and say we're done. But what we can do is continue to try to get the best possible understanding of what our community situation is, what the needs are, prevent as many people as possible from becoming homeless, shorten the length of time that they experience it, and help people leave homelessness behind for good, which is really the ultimate goal. And that's what we mean by saying homelessness should be rare, brief, and non-recurring. So one way we understand homelessness is our point-in-time count, which we do annually in January. And this year, we counted 349 people who were homeless. Only 78 of them were unsheltered in Virginia Beach last January 2017. That was the lowest number that we've counted since 2007. We've counted the same way and even expanded our outreach every year, but we're still seeing a very nice downward trend in the number of people we find homeless on any given day in January.
Well, that must be witness to what you all have been doing over the years, Andy. I didn't expect to see that number like that.
We think it's a good, positive sign, very much so.
It really is.
Of those people who we found homeless, 226 were single adults, and about 111 people were missing, a few data points there, but 111 were members of families with children. Yes, sir.
Is it why your number's so different than the school board's number? Do they count differently?
Yes, sir.
Because they have a much bigger number.
Right. I'm going to show you that in a second. Yes, sir. Homeless youth in that count consisted of both young adults and unfortunately some minor children aged 9 to 17 who were unaccompanied. Of the people who were counted, 62 were chronic, which means a multiple episodes of homelessness, and only 287 were not chronic. And this is what you were referring to, Mr. Moss. During the 1617 school year, more than 800 students who were members of several hundred families were identified as living in households, considered homeless, or at risk. And this is continuing, just a definitional difference between what the law, they're guided by to count people, and what we are. We work closely with the schools' Project Hope on helping to house those people as well. And we really want to report both of these numbers as pointing towards the community Another way to understand what the demand for services is, is we now are participants in the regional hotline, and so the great majority of people seeking help call this hotline. In fiscal year 1617, there were 3,675 callers. 2,400 of them were not literally homeless. They did have a housing issue, but not urgent enough for us to even think of being able to serve them. 1,200 were, were actually, calls were received, and they were referred in various ways. Some of them we lost contact with, some of them solved the problem themselves, but it's just another way to understand that there's an ongoing demand for services for people with housing crises. And so also, we want to compare ourselves to other cities, and we continue to be pretty good in comparison to cities that we think are comparable, which is East Coast cities and other coastal cities. So we have compared ourselves to Richmond, Arlington, Orlando, Montgomery City, Montgomery County, Maryland, Daytona Beach, and on the far right, Baltimore City, Maryland. Now, these are not exact geographic things. Each continuum of care reports these numbers, so we think we have a lower rate of homelessness than Richmond City, but Richmond has a continuum of care that counts some of the suburban counties in, so their rate is a little, is different because the suburban counties have a lower rate. So back to Leela, she came to the oceanfront and accessed the services at the Lighthouse Center. And last year, in 2016, she participated in a winter shelter program and was able to sleep indoors on the churches who participated and make that program possible. And we were able, our staff was able to find her a place at Tranquility at the Lakes, which is known to you as the new senior affordable housing project up at Burton Station that just opened recently. So we have a great community history of helping the homeless. It's always been a partnership of church, nonprofit, and governmental entities working together. The community partnership kind of formalized that partnership, and since 2009, we have been meeting together as a community to make plans together. And we have more than 30 organizations who come to bi-monthly meetings and participate in developing plans, reviewing plans, and developing new programs together. So we think of this as one coalition, and that's why we're calling our plan "One Community." We mobilize our community to prevent and end homelessness, and obviously, our goal is a future where everyone will be able to live in safe, decent, and affordable housing. So we want to point out some of the accomplishments. Since we came to you in 2013 and you endorsed our plan, we've been continually evolving and improving our system. For example, right now, everyone who calls is identified as literally homeless with a top priority needs is referred to housing through our Coordinated Assessment Process. So we don't have a first-come, first-served system. We have a people-in-the-most-need, people-who-are-most-vulnerable system. And in the last six months, we placed 145 people from that group into various types of housing. And they were all types of people. They were singles, families, and unaccompanied youth. About 24 people a month, so almost one every day, being placed into housing. In 2014, with the council's initiative to fund this, we started the Pinky's Homeless Outreach Team, which continues and is a regular part of our system now. In 2015, we were able to functionally end veterans homelessness with the region and the state all together. We housed 157 veterans in that one-year effort, and we continually, continue to house veterans as they become known to us and as openings occur. Functionally ending homelessness means that we expect that a veteran who's identified to us will be housed within 60 days of us getting, being aware of that. In 2016, the city took over operating the Lighthouse Day Support Center and the Coordinated Assessment Program as nonprofits decided that they couldn't do those functions anymore, and we integrated those with the Homeless Outreach Team. We're part of a regional homeless information management system, which gives us a great deal of leverage. We have an administrator that we don't have to pay the full cost of. We have access to data and reports that we otherwise would not. We also opened Crescent Square Apartments, which the council helped to fund, which has 42 affordable units for previously homeless persons, as well as 38 units for anyone, any single person needing affordable housing. And we also, this says 2017, but in 2016, we joined the Regional Crisis Housing Hotline, so we share costs with, in fact, the entire region, where people needing homeless services call just one number, and there's just one intake form done for them. So that's a great efficiency. Our nonprofit partner, VB Home Now, has raised over $300,000 in donations to support our system, and we're working every day, and they are working every day, to identify new donors and new opportunities. I mentioned Tranquility at the Lakes, and the fact that the partnership continues to meet, and they continue to come every two months for the last eight years, is really a testament to the fact that we have a community effort going on. Okay, a little bit about the plan. We want to call it the "Community of One" plan, changing from the strategic plan to end homelessness. We think it expresses how we're working together, and the goals really are making it rare, brief, and non-recurring. I want to recognize our staff who are here today. Karen Parchillo, our Housing Development Administrator, has led our efforts for many years. Pam Shine is our Homeless Systems Manager, who herds all the people together to make our system work. Jasmine Sheselsky put this presentation together and really is putting the plan together. And Diane Hottelling, formerly of Virginia Wesleyan College, is our new volunteer coordinator for the system.
Thank you all for being here.
So we're just, we think this plan builds and expands upon the 2013 plan, especially regarding opening the Housing Resource Center, enhancements we've made, and continually, continuously learning about things we need to do better. I think we've had a robust and inclusive process. We started back in 2016 with the Beach Governing Board having a retreat. We had community input sessions in the summer of 2016. We had a little bit of delay due to Hurricane Matthew. We picked back up in the spring of 2017, and we had individual stakeholder interviews with over 30 stakeholders. We've had public input for 30 days this fall, and then we're going to go to the governing board on September 26th and then come back to you. Here are the seven major goals of the plan. We want to continue transforming our system to be the most effective at moving people out of homelessness, including the Housing Resource Center. We want to make family, chronic homelessness, and youth homelessness specific focuses of our efforts in the next several years. Increase affordable housing opportunities, which is the true way to solve the problem. Continue enhancing our leadership, collaboration, and civic engagement. We're excited about all the opportunities that we see in the communities for people to come together at the Housing Resource Center, and certainly, continue developing and increasing community support for the effort. So just on Goal One, which is transforming our system, we're going to focus on Objective 1.6 on the Housing Resource Center. I want to point out that there are five departments working together to make this happen. Clearly, Public Works is the construction management part of the operation and planning for the building maintenance and operations activities. Human Services is on the third floor of the building, and we are going to have an integrated reception and service coordination planned for them. So people coming there will have both opportunities for all the services that the city has available, including the fact that we'll have a health services provider on the first floor coordinated by the Health Department. We're working closely with the Purchasing Office to procure our contracted providers. We're going to run the services in the building. And we have Deputy Chief Zuccaro, who is a member of our governing board, who advises us on all things security and policing. So we're taking seriously all of those functions and using the city resources that we have. Key action steps, I'll just focus on a few of these. Obviously, develop and construct it. We have to relocate services from the Lighthouse, some services from our- We have to relocate services from the Lighthouse, some services from our offices, and all the services that Human Services is moving as well. We have to solicit and choose contractors to run the services there. And I want to mention that we hope to establish a social enterprise as part of or in conjunction with the Housing Resource Center. A social enterprise is an actual business that intends to do well while making a profit, and those enterprises have been effective in some cities in employing people, being self-sustaining, and still, and leading to positive outcomes for the people they employ. We're going to have a security plan that we want to have a welcoming as well as a safe environment for everyone. A transportation plan to ensure that we have access to the building. And that's been a big question from everyone. Why will people at the Oceanfront go to the Housing Resource Center? And the answer is because we're going to help them get there, and we're going to make it a magnet for them, those who want to get out of homelessness, to come there and seek services. And a health services plan for the health clinic. And I want to emphasize that a part of our plan since 2011 has been that we would reduce the impact, seek to reduce the impact of homelessness at the Oceanfront. When we talked with the council back in 2011 about the original location, we learned that was not the location that the community desired, which was on Bird Neck Road. And since then, we've been, with the new site, we've been saying, part of this is relocating some services away from the Oceanfront. There should not be every single service there. So the obvious thing we're doing, opening the Resource Center, ensuring access to the Resource Center, we're going to focus outreach efforts at the Oceanfront. We're working with JCOC on their potential changes. And of course, the Lighthouse Center is expected to close once we open the Housing Resource Center. So as I said, we're going to bring this to our Governing Board in September, then come back to you and request that you adopt the plan in October. And that is a plan that we're required to have, and we're happy to put it together in order to continue qualifying for state and federal funds as well. And so finishing this story, Leela moved into her own apartment at Tranquility at the Lakes. She actually has enough income to afford it herself. She loves the place. It's a beautiful spot right there with a nice porch, and she's going to have her best Christmas in years with her own apartment and her own tree. So we thank you, and this is her quote, "I already received the best gift a place of my own." We thank you for your attention. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Andy. Very good. Questions or comments, please? John?
One comment. I took the opportunity to go and do my own research, as you can imagine. And one of the things I found, both in the research by think tanks, as well as, you know, academics, and they are academically conducted studies, is that affordable housing is the wrong venue, that really the focus should be on jobs, because without jobs, there isn't any housing they can afford. So in reality, when you're looking at homeless, the first step to transition into anywhere is employment. So I would suggest that the board and all consider that, do you have the right focus on affordable housing? Because that means, generally speaking, since they have no income, we get in the housing business, rather than being in the promoting employment business and people securing their own housing and being less dependent upon government, and our footprint is smaller. I just think you probably need to take some time to look, maybe, and look at some of the literature, some of the stuff that's been done, the case studies, but I do think it is the job that gives the people the self-worth and really changes the character. Everybody isn't going to get SSI disability income, which is taxpayers providing a benefit for rent, but instead, you know, earning income in the transactional economy. So I just would advise you take a look at that. And I think the school number for homeless is up. That may be attributable to the flooding and how they count, and that might be the reason. I suspect it is.
There was an impact, for sure, of that.
You might want to have a footnote that, so I'm sure they can provide that, so you can get a, really look at a non-Mathew-influenced number, so we can know whether or not, by the way they count, is homelessness, the kids up or down? Because I think that's probably what drove that.
We will get that trend info, I agree. And Mr. Moss, we totally agree on that, and it, we didn't highlight it in this, but in the plan, there is employment and training. And we already have three venues that we're pursuing employment and training. One is with the Human Services Departments, where they have their training plan in place. We have a donation to VB Home Now from the Steel Corporation, and they want to work with us on job readiness for their jobs. And I'm forgetting the third one. But that will be a focus of our efforts, is employment and income as well as housing.
You mentioned San Diego and Los Angeles. Los Angeles sent billions of dollars on trying to make affordable housing for homeless, and their homeless numbers have just gone up. It's also true of San Diego. So in some cases, I won't say it's statistically significant, but there are anecdotal cases where just an affordable housing policy only, housing homeless goes up, not down.
All right, Barbara, and then Bobby.
Of course, this, I guess, we look at it from a regional situation, too. How do we know that the same person isn't being counted by two different localities? I'm sure that's in the database somewhere, but...
Right. So that's the great, that's the great advantage we have. We have one regional database now, and we have identifiers that allow us to know if a person has been seen anywhere in the region, I think. Am I right? Yeah, that's right. So that did not used to be true before we created this regional shared database. So sometimes people do move, and that's their, that's their right to move, but we can see if they are, what previous services they've sought, what their previous condition is, and act appropriately based on that. So the regional database and the single call center, I think, reduce the opportunity of people to unnecessarily seek duplicate services, and also allows us to know more about what their history has been and what their needs might be.
Bobby?
Yeah, thank you. And I think one of the other highlights is Cloverleaf.
Yes, sir.
And the single-room occupancy place that used to be a skating rink that they turned into a facility. And it's my understanding that that's kind of like a bridge facility, where people go, they're set up, and you actually found jobs, and they're not there extremely long time. But, you know, the idea is to transition them, you know, get them a job so they eventually get their own place. Is that a correct thing?
Yes, sir. So there's, it's important to know that there are people with different levels of capability, ultimately. Not everyone is ultimately capable of self-supporting themselves with employment, but to the extent that that is possible over time with additional supports and training, that is the system's goal, is we want to move people on to independent living so that more spaces are freed up for the people who need it today. Absolutely.
And I've been, I treated a number of patients in that facility, and it's a very well-run, clean facility. You know, they have monitoring of, you know, what goes on and everything, but, you know, the residents that I find there are very, very motivated and, you know, very happy to be there.
Great. That's great to know. Thank you.
You know, Andy didn't mention it in his presentation, but we've spoken about it many times, but, I mean, we need to remember that, really, in my view, the largest benefit to moving the, our facility from the Oceanfront was the ability to actually add housing to it. And what we were going to do before is we were going to move the Lighthouse Center and make it a little bit bigger and move it on Bird Neck Road, but because of the Navy ACOS restrictions, there was no way we were going to ever do housing. So we were going to, and it was a great idea, and I was supportive of it, but we were going to create a homeless support facility that didn't have any housing, which is, I think, the big win to locating where we are. We've got literally one-stop shopping to really take care of people's immediate needs and then transition them into a more stable place.
Great. Other questions or comments? I would just say to the nonprofits that support, work with you as partners, a great big thank you, because the city cannot do this on its own. I say to Andy, I don't know how you get done what you do with as little as you get. And I mean that honestly. I mean, you know, you think about where we've been putting homeless people, is in churches every week. And then also, to see the numbers declining is, I think, is huge and shows that these partnerships are working, but I sincerely thank you and the people that work with you because you do a heck of a lot and a good job with not a whole lot of resources. So we thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of everyone here on the nonprofits, we thank the council for your very good, very helpful support.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on now. Oceanfront Form-Based Code. Ashby, we are waiting for you, young lady.
We welcome you. Thank you. Good afternoon. So I'm here today to talk about the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code amendments. The, just a little background on this, we originally adopted this code five years ago in 2012, and projects submitted really picked up in 2014. But as we gained more experience in actually administering the code, we sort of took notes along the way as to how to improve it. So we formed a steering committee two years ago in 2015 to prepare this amendment package and try to improve the code. So five years later, we think it's been pretty successful so far. A lot of development interest in the Oceanfront area, and particularly, the area west of Pacific Avenue, which was formerly the RT3 district. That is where we've seen kind of the most, I don't want to say explosive, but the most growth in interest and development, which was one of the main goals of the Form-Based Code. We have had at least 68 projects approved, and you have seen a lot of them. You've seen 25 of those have been approved through discretionary approval, but 43 have gone through administratively. So there's more happening behind the scenes, and not everything has to come to City Council to get approval with this code. And there are several projects that weren't possible before the Form-Based Code came along, and this just shows some pictures of some of those. So like I said, we formed a steering committee almost two years ago. We met at least nine times. We had a walking tour. We went through all of the issues that had been brought up, and also, the ones that hadn't been brought up that staff was really, was just noticing, like clarifications that were needed. And most of the issues were resolved with just clarifying the language in the code, explaining how it works, and educating people on what is allowed in the Form-Based Code. There are some policy changes in the amendments, and these were to address a common sentiment that there's too much building on small parcels, and also, there's too little green or open space. So another thing, so this is kind of a summary list of the different issues that were brought to us. In order to address them, we had to separate what the Form-Based Code could actually address directly, and what issues are related but not directly affected by the Form-Based, or they can't be corrected directly by the Form-Based Code. So that kind of made it able, made us able to focus in on what we really could address in the code amendments. And some of the things we've learned is that, just like I was saying, zoning is just one tool to achieve the vision that we outlined in the Resort Area Strategic Action Plan. The code's a little complicated. It could use some simplification and clarification, like I mentioned. The connector parks are key. These are one of the things that makes our city and our Oceanfront in particular unique, and so we need to protect those further. I've learned that there's a design solution for everything. So that's one of the things that this code allows us to do, is switch out a different design that's going to achieve the same purpose. I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then some of the unintended consequences of eliminating the density cap, which is standard in zoning codes, is there's a little bit too much potential for overmassing, and we also inadvertently removed an incentive to assemble property, and this is just on the east side of Atlantic. So we found, we found a way to address that fairly. So the revisions are divided into three categories, basically. A lot of it is just reorganization, moving a section here that would go better into the end of the, or last chapter, or moving chapters around, just to make the code flow better as you're reading through it. Then the clarifications and corrections, because if you look at the redlined copies, you'll see a lot of red, but most of that is clarifications and corrections. And then, like I mentioned, the handful of policy changes. So I have the highlights of the clarifications and corrections. I'm not going to go through these, except to demonstrate the flexibility with this code and how I mentioned that design, a design solution can solve just about everything. So just as a reminder, there are three paths to get approved with this Form-Based Code. You can follow the prescribed form to the letter, by the number, everything it says in the code, and do exactly that. You can also get an administrative approval through optional forms of development, and this is the majority of projects that we've seen have used this method to get approval. And then there's alternative compliance, which comes to you for discretionary approval. So explaining the optional forms of development was, we realized we needed to do that better. And not only, I mean, staff needed to learn it more, too, because this was brand-new to us when we adopted this code. So this, like I said, allows administrative approval for a different design alternative that's going to meet the same purpose of the prescribed requirement. And it can be applied to just about anything in the code. So we have added some text to kind of better describe this, and more importantly, we're updating the design guidelines to provide some better examples, now that we've practiced on a few. I won't go through these, but this gives some examples for each type of prescribed form, and then what the criteria is, and then a suggested optional form for it. So as far as the policy changes, highlights for that go, one of the ways that we are trying to reduce the massing and also preserve views of the eastern sky is to add an additional five-foot setback to the connector parks. Rather than having setbacks interior between the blocks and just creating unused alleys, if we just set the buildings back farther, a little bit farther from the connector parks, that will increase our views and important vistas. Increased outdoor amenity space, which can be open space, green space, it can be at ground level, it can be on a rooftop. It's, it's very flexible, but it achieves what we need it to achieve, is to provide that outdoor space that people can enjoy. And we also increased minimum lot sizes a little bit, and lot sizes and lot widths for some of the building types. So I mentioned we are updating the design guidelines to add examples and supplement it with pictures. We're also going to reference the Connector Park Design Guidelines, which Emily Archer drafted a couple of years ago, and we just need to roll it into this code to formally adopt it. And, oh, and also the Open Air Cafe Guidelines. So we have had extensive public outreach, beginning in August, and we've met with a number of stakeholder groups. We have a few left. And, oh, importantly, the public information meeting is going to be held on October 5th. Oh, wait, there it is. At 6 o'clock at the Convention Center. So I welcome you to attend that, if you'd like. And then if all things go on schedule, we would go to Planning Commission November 8th, City Council back here for adoption December 5th. And there's lots more information available on the webpage, and anyone who wants more information or wants to review anything can just give me a call or an email, and I'd be happy to go through it with them. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Ashby. John?
Before the public hearing of the 5th, will you have these pictorial representations that translates the words to a graphic in front of the public hearing?
We're shooting for that.
Because a lot of people are visual learners. And before it comes back to us, it would be great if you could do a portfolio of just pictures of, show me some examples of things today that were administratively approved. pictures of, show me some examples of things today that were administratively approved, that were optional build. I don't know if anyone built anything exactly to the code, because it seems like we've proved a lot of optionals. But if anyone did build something to the prescriptive form code, I'd like to know where that is and picture. That would be good, because then you could compare what you see today to what's being proposed, and then you get a better idea of knowing what the words mean. I might be the only one, but that's not too hard to take a picture. But I realize it takes time to do a graphic illustration of what you're proposing.
Right.
But if you can do that before the public hearing, I think that would help people a lot.
Definitely. And that's the goal, to kind of have that, and looking, show some before afters, because now some of the projects are actually being constructed, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? We thank you very much for your time. We got some more presentations down the road, it looks like.
Thank you, Ashby.
All right, Kathy, we walked beyond the Lynn Haven corridor. Mr. Hanson, these are going very smooth today. Very nicely done.
Surly.
No freckles on Kathy, keep it that way. I don't feel rushed or anything. This is good. We're getting a lot done.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager. I'm here today to provide an update on the Lynn Haven corridor improvements project. Just to start with some background, the project came about after the Lynn Haven Business Association approached Council Lady Kane, and had expressed their concerns about the physical nature of the corridor and its connectivity. The request was to address the two-mile stretch between 264 and South Tulichelle Place, and the goal was to improve the pedestrian experience as well as design features that would improve the streetscape. Council Lady Kane was instrumental in getting the right people at the table from the private sector and the city to start the planning effort. As you know, this corridor is home to several of the city's largest employers, such as Steel, Bush Manufacturing, Kettler International, and of course, our Lynn Haven Mall. Just to show you the location we're talking about, we're talking about the area in red that's about a two-mile stretch. That'll tie right into Lynn Haven Improvements 9 that was recently completed, and connects directly into Greenbrier. The team that's working on this project is, of course, the Lynn Haven Business Association is our stakeholders. SGA Office is working on the planning and concept design. Public Works with project management, economic development as the business liaison, and then Kim Lee Horn and WPL are our design consultants. Just to show you a snapshot of existing conditions, this is a picture traveling south on Lynn Haven. This is the west side of Lynn Haven Parkway. McDonald's is on your right. This chain-link fence would be one of the first things that we will work to improve. We would take that down and then replace it with some ornamental fence. The next is traveling north on Lynn Haven Parkway. What you'll note that's important here is there's no place for someone who's catching a bus here to stand. There's no shelter, and there are no sidewalks on this side. This is the southeast mall entrance of Lynn Haven Parkway, which you'll note here, there's no pedestrian crosswalks, there's no way for someone to safely cross the streets here. So the goals of the plan are, one, to aesthetically improve the corridor and its connectivity, create a better sense of arrival, and a sense of place so that you know when you are entering the retail and business district. Also, it's to physically enhance this area, as it plays such a vital economic role for the city, to make it more attractive for not only the existing businesses, but to attract new businesses and new employees. The scope of the project calls for, and I mentioned this earlier, the removal and replacement of the chain-link fence with decorative fencing, stormwater management, new gateway signage and landscaping, new brick medians and crosswalks, an eight-to-10-foot shared-use path with pedestrian lighting and street trees on the west side of Lynn Haven, a five-foot sidewalk on the east side of Lynn Haven Parkway, and then to add some new bus shelters. So this is part of the Lynn Haven Phase 9 project. This is the same type of design we want to use for the median and crosswalks with the brick type here, and the tie-in to the sidewalks. This is just an example of gateway signage that the Lynn Haven Business Association is looking at right now. They're working through their branding efforts to come up with a new brand, if you will, for all of the Lynn Haven Business corridor. And then this is the proposed location for that new sign, the, the entry sign into Lynn Haven corridor. This is directly when you're coming off of 264 going south on Lynn Haven Parkway, and the goal here is to not only be visible for those traveling south into the corridor, but also for those that are up on 264 with the overpass. That's what this picture shows. So on to proposed intersection improvements. Here you'll see a before and an after. This is the southwest corner of Lynn Haven Parkway and Potters. This will show you what it could look like with new brick paver, crosswalks and median, and then heavy landscaping on the southwest corner. Here we're proposing sidewalk improvements, again, for any pedestrian traveling down this corridor going south. It's a four-foot sidewalk, and what we'd like to do is come in with that eight-to-10-foot shared-use path, and a path where you can stand when you're going to catch the bus. So this is what that would look like with pedestrian lighting. Onto the funding. CIP 9028 has $4 million projected. $2 million were appropriated last year for FY 2018, and then an additional $2 million in program for 2019. For the proposed budget and schedule, design from July 2017 to June 2018, with a budgeted amount of $345,000. For private utility adjustments, January 2018 to June 2019, $344,000. Construction, beginning July 2018 through June 2019, just under $2.3 million. Streetlights, July 2018 to June 2019, for $184,000, and landscaping for $230,000 between March and June of 2019. So progress to date, parks and recreation, they've limbed up a lot of the trees at the southwest and southeast corners. They've done a lot of cleanup work out there. The CIP has been approved in FY 18 and 19. Funding. And the Lynn Haven Business Association has met with the city several times, in January, June, and July, and then recently representatives from the Lynn Haven Business Association and the Central Business District Association have met to discuss capital fundraising and how that association should be structured. Our engineering design has commenced, and we are on target for construction to begin in July of 2018. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Specifically for the city manager, I know we have a policy about sidewalks. When neighborhoods who didn't have sidewalks want sidewalks, they petition their neighborhood, and then if they put the sidewalks, they're put in at the neighborhood's expense, they pay for the sidewalks when they go in the neighborhood. Or their property taxes go up or something to pay for the sidewalks. Am I mistaken on that?
I'm looking at Barry, and I haven't heard of it.
Never heard of it.
What do you want to know?
I think there's CIP for funding sidewalks.
Yeah, we're working pretty hard.
Well, that's, I know a lady came around out of everybody asking people, you may recall when she had the petition to get sidewalks and no one signed it, because they didn't want them. And I thought, she told us, that's why I was just asking, because I'm not killing that. I just want to know. And on the drainage, is that to do maintenance, or are we creating new drainage capacity for the corridor because its drainage is deficient? You said stormwater management.
It's all to do with the improvements that are going in. We have to put new stormwater management in for those. So for the sidewalks, anything that's going to be new in there?
Create impervious.
Yes.
So, we're creating impervious, so there's on how many linear feet of sidewalks?
I can get that number for you.
I'll give you the metrics and tell you what the stormwater requirements are.
Because that now will be paid out of a capital investment in CIP, then turned over as an asset to be depreciated, recouped for maintenance out of the stormwater management fee. Would that be correct?
Yes. Yeah. I, I mean, I got to take infrastructure that I create, and it's got to go somewhere, and I need a sustainment plan, so it gets, it gets handed off to the asset management.
Enterprise Fund itself won't be financing the initial capital outlet.
Yes, sir.
It'll be made from this fund, but the asset will be turned over without an actuarial balance, so then to be just charged off and maintained by the general, by the Enterprise Fund, correct?
And I'm hoping that business in our mall and to our businesses in one of the leading economic areas of our city.
Because this is the precedent I hope to follow in some other examples, so I'm just trying to make sure I understand it.
Barbara?
Two points. On John's question about the sidewalks, I know the Bikes and Trails Committee follows sidewalks and mixed recommendations, so I'm assuming that's what comes with the sidewalks and the way it's done, or at least partially. Is this an informational briefing, or, okay, the, the funding is sort of proposed at this point, but I guess they'll be voted on with budgets in the future? Is that?
It's, it's programmed. I mean, the way we need to think about our budget is, you appropriate year one, and you palm, you program your years two through six. And so you have the choice at any given budget to say, eh, I need to take that $2 million, and it's got to go somewhere else, and then, you know, y'all arm wrestle it at the table, and you tell staff where you want to go, you vote it in, we move on. But, yes, ma'am, you are correct. You appropriated year one, $2 million, and we programmed year two to 19, and you'll see that in the upcoming budget.
These will be in the budget unless we decide to change it.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Ben?
I'd just like to say how excited I am about this project. Seeing the illustrations of what it could and probably will look like is very exciting. And if Shannon were here, I'd like to commend Shannon for, for leading this effort, because this is such a vital economic engine for our city.
If Shannon's not here, because she's with her son at a doctor, so she'll be here shortly.
Great, great. And I think that this is going to be, really become a solid after area, and do in large part to the improvements that are being made. So thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay. City Hall 2020.
So as we swap out teams, and our facility engineer, Tom Nicholas, takes the podium, and Mosley Architects and the in-house project delivery team join him, we are back before you to give you some, some feedback on the public engagement process. And I want to thank Mr. Bob Dyer, who made all three of those meetings and introduced each of those public meetings, made introductory comments on behalf of all of you at those meetings.
Bobby, we thank you for doing that.
And, and then we, and then we're here today to refresh your memory on, on what the options are that we are, are working on, and then to, to get your direction. So this is a directional, which, if you only gave me two categories, informational or decisional, then you would classify this as decisional. But then that leads people to believe that you're making something that really is directional, because we want to go forward and create a, a resolution for you to consider approval of a course of action in two weeks, and have one last public hearing related to that. So with that, Mr. Tom Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager. Again, here today with Mr. Josh Bennett from Mosley Architects. He's the project manager for Mosley Architects. Also, Mr. Kevin Jensen, our director of facility design and construction, Mr. Tim Oliver, who's our project manager on this project.
Glad to have all of you here.
So 2017 has been, been a busy year. Just want to touch on some things. Back in January, I came in and talked to you at length about the deficiencies in the building. I talked to you again in February, when I did the Buildings and Assets CIP presentation to show you where this fell out and, and the funding request. In May, we came in, Mr. Tony Bell from Mosley Architects, and I did a presentation for you on the options, the schedule, and the budgets, which led to the decision to have more public engagement. And then so we made the video clip in, on June the 19th, and we had public sessions on the 26th of June. The 27th of June, we, we decided that we would be limiting our options to the municipal center. We had another public session on the 26th of July, which included a Facebook Live section, session. And we had our third public session in August, on the 23rd. And then in your package, on September the 1st, there was a, a report out prepared by Media and Communications that talked about the results and the conclusions of some of those public sessions. So where are we? Well, at this point, the, the building deficiencies are well documented, and my sense from the three public sessions we had was the public clearly understood that it was time to do something. We did the programs-based needs analysis, which we developed through 2070, and, and since the last time we've talked, Mosley Architects and our team, and Deputy City Manager Tom Leahy, went back through each of the departments and revalidated that. We have a CIP in the current budget this year and the next five years, which totals $50,250,000 for planning, design, and construction. We have six options developed to either renovate the building or to build a new one, and we have conducted citizen engagement. So space, I'll, I'll touch on this briefly. Again, we went through the space planning exercise, program exercise in the fall of 2016. As you'll remember, this building itself is 80,000 gross square feet, and the current need is the left side of the category. And, and we felt, the first time we briefed you in January, that we needed 149,000 square feet and change. We went back through that department by department to confirm those numbers, again, this time with the department leadership and Mr. Leahy in the room, challenging everybody. Some numbers changed as far as when they thought they needed space, but all in all, it only changed by 900 square feet over that 50-year projection. So we have options to go back through, and I'd like Josh to come up and join me at the podium, and, and as Josh was the creator in many ways of these options, let him address it.
Glad to have you.
Great. Thanks again for having me. So, as a recap, what we have on the screen here is Option 1A. This option considers taking the existing city hall, about 80,000 square feet, and renovating it, and having a building addition of approximately 70,000 square feet. Okay? The entrance to the existing city hall would maintain, be the same in the renovated solution. So this has a few advantages and disadvantages to it, as any option will. Obviously, it maintains the existing city hall as the city hall. However, it does displace people from city hall for some time as the building is renovated. It does also have the longest construction period that we considered, longest by approximately four months. Option 1B is similar, however, it considers adding a full 150,000-square-foot addition to the rear of the existing city hall, and then leaving the existing city hall available for renovation and reuse for other purposes. This option would move the entrance to the building, to the side-facing building, too. Advantages and disadvantages for that include the relocation of the entrance may be a little confusing for people as they approach the building. However, construction of the building and centralizing it in this area would present some advantage operationally for different departments. Option 2, which Tom will talk about in a little bit, and I believe Mr. Hanson has already stated, was the preferred option by many members of the public, would construct a new three-story building essentially on the parking lot behind Building 1, between Buildings 1 and 2. Okay? The existing flagpole area would become a roundabout, and we would rebuild that as a new entrance to the building. Some disadvantages to that, it may require relocation of the volunteer garden and the gazebo, something that we can consider on-site, and it would increase distance from some of the visitor parking to the front door of the building. Option 3 was considered on what is called the Building 3 site, a large green space right now, immediately between the school board building and Building 2, or Mattapani Road and Building 2. This option centralizes the building within city, within the campus, centralizes city hall within the campus. It also creates a new entrance off of George Mason. Disadvantages include that it does have a very limited standoff distance from Mattapani Road. Road. Option 3B considers taking some of the existing parking for building two and locating a new 149,000 square foot building there facing George Mason. Disadvantages here include that we are covering up some portion of building two. Advantages are, however, though, we are creating some pretty good distinctions between public parking and private parking for employees and staff. And option 3C takes that same concept and moves it over, in this concept, we would actually close Mattupenai Road, face the building toward, inward towards Courthouse Drive, and create a green space in front of the building. Again, this option would distinguish between staff parking and public parking. It would also create some good connectivity, being central to the campus, would create some good connectivity between the individual buildings and a good walkable campus. Tom?
So we went through these options, again, in very similar format for each of the three public sessions, and really, there was a lot, a lot of engagement. The, you know, as, as, as we said earlier, the, the purpose was not only to inform the public, but to solicit feedback. We also had a dedicated webpage which was up for information and for people to provide surveys, and there were 114 respondents to that. The three public sessions that we had where we provided the briefs and the surveys, there were 99 attendees, that's all three combined, so that, not, not 99 at each, but 93 total, and 43 people of that 99 provided survey responses. We had two city employee meetings that were, were pretty well attended, and we got 95 surveys back from that, and there were 2,506 people viewing my Facebook Live presentation and commenting throughout that. So as, as Josh just mentioned, of, of those that responded, option two was the alternative preferred by those that attended the meeting and, and filled out their survey forms. And then I spent a lot of time going through all of the survey forms myself and, and trying to capture themes that will be considered during the design process, and, you know, you, you have to sort of read a lot of that with an open mind. There were some people who were angry but have a good idea, and, and you, you go through that and you capture the idea, and there were other people kind of hard to understand exactly what they meant, but, but if you go through it enough times, you start to see some themes, and, and the, one of the big themes was ease of access and security. Obviously, people want to be able to park close to their city hall and not be encumbered by employee parking. They want to have good ADA access, which is requirement. Also, quite a surprising number of people were concerned about security, not just the people that work in the building, but the people that come to the building want to make sure that we do that right. A number of respondents said we've got to be careful about EMS access and, and being able to take gurneys up and down our elevators and pay close attention to that. And then signage, folks clearly sent us the message that they want to know where they're going and why they're going there. Architectural considerations, a couple of people made good comments about efficiency of space and, and wanting to make sure we took care of the taxpayer dollar and that there weren't wasted square footage in the building. A lot of folks wanted us to make sure that the integrity of the municipal center was maintained, and, you know, they, they like the, the colonial-style Georgian architecture that we have here, and they don't want us to go outside the box with, with the type of building we designed. And, and nearly everyone said they want to make sure we incorporate enough technology in the building that as we move into the future, our ability as a staff to function better and our ability to integrate with the public is, is enhanced with that. Some kind of fun ideas for program desires, there were folks that suggested that they would like to be able to come into city hall and do zoning permits and inspections work at the same time they're, they're doing their other city business. There are folks that would like to have parts of city hall set aside for community spaces, community meetings. Folks that suggested that small computer labs, similar to what we have in libraries, would be helpful, especially if they're waiting for something and they'd like to take care of some business on a computer. One individual suggested that we have a historian capable of providing a virtual tour of the city from with inside city hall, and, and others suggested things like book drop, workout spaces. Actually, the person who suggested food services, I, I called them on the phone and said, really? What did you mean? And, you know, this particular citizen comes a lot on Tuesdays to this type of a meeting. They sit either through this meeting in here or they watch it on the television, and then they go next door for the, for the formal session, and they said, you know, there's just no place to eat. And so they just asked us to think about the food service choices on the municipal center and how that might integrate with, with the city hall, and, and that really, obviously, that, that person has been here and, and has, has wrestled with what do you do on Tuesdays. A number of folks also asked the very valid question, and we, we addressed it at each of the public sessions, so what about building one? You know, what does the future hold for building one? So, as you'll remember, we, we've talked about this before, but as I, as I presented at the public sessions, the construction of a new building three for public utilities and IT has been discussed for about 10 years, so the, the idea wasn't new. We had a 2011 planning study that identified a space requirement of 76,000 square feet to house IT and public utilities, and, and a cost estimate at that time that a new building three construction would cost about $36 million if, if we did it now. Well, so it, it wasn't, it was just fortuitous that we find, if, if we were to pick a new construction option, that we find ourselves within 80,000 square foot vacant building, and we could renovate this building for about $24 million to house IT and public utilities, and, and that saves 12,000 versus building, 12 million versus building a new building. And, and if we were to move in that direction, that is outside the current budget, and so a CIP would be presented in the FY19 program that would come to you for, to facilitate design in '21 and renovation in '22 with, with a, a new $24 million CIP. So that, that's what would happen with, with building one. So, we wanted to come back and get in front of you today, as we've, we've talked about for a while, to discuss these options, and, and if possible, come away from here with an understanding of, of what preference you might like to see if we're going to prepare a city council resolution to enable you to make a, a selection.
Very good. Thank you for the presentation, Jim Wood.
Thanks. I appreciate this, excuse me, presentation, but there, there's a couple of things. First, obviously, we're looking for an efficient, safe building for not only city employees, but for citizens who, who come visit, and I think that, that's, that's the key thing here. I would say that, while I like building the option two, I just want to be very clear that I don't think we need to mess with the volunteer garden, and, and the reason I say that is I remember it, Mary Russo, over several years, who's obviously since passed away, worked on building that volunteer garden. I remember her strong arming Farm Fresh and Home Depot and everybody, they got the plants, got pavers, got all this stuff done, and, and did a phenomenal work, and frankly, she spent a lot of money out of her own pocket for it. So, while, while we could certainly relocate it and make it a lot nicer, it's not the same, and, and I think that, that's an important distinction here, and based on everything that I've seen up until this point, it looked like the volunteer garden was in the lower right-hand corner.
It could be. We haven't made that, that decision.
From, from my perspective, I, I think it needs to stay that way, and, and especially given the, the amount of support that we get from the city, from volunteers, you know, every year we get this $30 million big fake check from Father Park and, and before that...
That's real money.
And we got it from Mary Russo before that, so, so that's the one issue, and I just want to make sure that we do that, and perhaps we can make the volunteer garden more of a focal point of this, and, and I think that, that would solve the issue. The other, other thing, and...
But I'm hearing you, option two is what I've just made a note.
Well, option two, but I want to make sure we're not messing with the volunteer garden, but, but when you talk about going forward with the new building three, I, I think we need to be cognizant of building 11, you know, the, the police headquarters building?
Right.
Because that building is in rough shape.
It is.
And it's never really been renovated on the, on the basement level with the old cells and all that, and the old communications, that's all just kind of been done, kind of as Band-Aid approach, and we've got a lot of people in that building, and when you go upstairs and, and you walk through their, their tiny little offices and mazes and things like that, and it's, it's confusing to get in and out, and, and, you know, frankly, the, the precincts are a lot nicer than, than the headquarters building, and, and I know that, I believe there's HVAC issues there, I think the roof was just replaced, if I'm not mistaken.
Roof was just replaced.
Yeah, it had roof issues, I know, so, so I think we really need to take a look at, at that building, you know, maybe even more importantly than, than the building two issues, but, but those are my comments.
Any other comments? John?
Go back to 1A, I've a number of comments, but what's option 1A, I think it was, one where the, I think, where we stay where we're at, I don't know about the addition. I've always said from the beginning, I wasn't certain that we had this, what the 77,000 additional square foot or 70,000 square foot requirement was, and I've done a number of building moves, and as much as I appreciate how hard Tom and the department heads look at space, I can tell you, they don't look at nearly as hard as the people who write the check. And so I don't know, somewhere in this process, Mr. Mayor, we need to have some third-party look, maybe it's ourselves, to look really at this additional 70,000 square feet for someone who doesn't have a vested, and you can't, can't deny it, a biased outcome of what it should look like, but people who are building contemporary office spaces, you know, because I don't know that we aren't building the wrong kind of space, and maybe the square footage is right, but the layout doesn't look like what the newer companies are building, we're collaboration, all those things, and maybe we're designing a traditional Puka City space, but that's really not kind of where the future is. So I, I don't know that the 70,000 requirement is right, and I don't know that if the allocation of it really represents best practice when you're thinking about 50 years out. I, we haven't seen that level of detail, we're just being asked to look at a number, look at the money and, and think it's right. I haven't heard anybody mention, do we want to have a daycare facility that a franchise comes and agrees to put in the facility that's this large for our complex? A lot of new people build big businesses today for this big employment, have daycare centers in their complex. I don't know if we should or shouldn't, but I don't know that we've assessed it, I think we should. I didn't see anyone talk about, maybe it is here somewhere, is this gonna have a locker shower room facility for men and women, for people, part of our health fitness, so we're putting that in the building? That's pretty common for new buildings today of this size. I'm just looking for all the things that deal with the workforce that are part of a building, that, that, that part. Do we have, if you think about, I've never been up to the 3M Building up in Minneapolis-St. Paul, it's a great building, but when they designed their new building, one of the things they understood is how much creative activity doesn't happen in offices, but happens in hallways, where the people are going to the restroom, getting a water fountain, getting their, but people stop, so they have these little alcoves periodically in their hallways where they have whiteboards and people have discussions and think about problems. I'm not saying that's everywhere, I'm just thinking there are a lot of things about how people act and learn and innovate, and was that functionality thought of when you looked at the building spaces versus looking at the traditional 20th century look that we experience? Now, to my last point, which I mentioned when I was in your office the other day, we were talking about something else, I really think, just as you talk about the garden, I think there is something important about continuity and consistency and history, which is why I believe that the city hall should stay in this building. You know, I, I mean, I think that's doable. Now, I know you said about IT, and I just can't see that's not a good idea, Mr. Hanson, but this building doesn't lend itself that well to false floors, which is most IT places I go that have big servers and all those things, all have false floors, they're elevated, the air conditioning, the cooling, and all those things that go with it, so maybe, and if we're thinking about storms and we're thinking about going ahead 50 years in the future, we might want our IT building to be a little bit more robust from a hurricane perspective and from an elevation perspective, and maybe this isn't even the right geographic location, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, so I don't know that while in the short run it might be the right answer, it could be a $12 million false savings. But, I'm not saying I won't support a solution that doesn't have us being in this building, I wouldn't want to say that, but I think there is something to be said for the heritage of the city of where we started, when this, in this building, I realize it doesn't go back to the very creation of 68, 69, I think, because...
69, sir.
69, so it's not 63 when Sidney, you know, people were making it all happen, but it's a long time. And, and if we're gonna consciously step away from that, okay, I mean, I, I would prefer to be here, and I think that's a better choice from my view, but I'm, it's just one view at the table, but I do think we need to make sure that if there really is a requirement for 70,000 square feet, I think it needs a look other than just the people who benefit directly from it, and we need to make sure that the functionality, are we gonna have Wi-Fi and charger stations and USB ports and all the chairs in the council chambers? I hope we are, I think that would be one of the things we'd want to have, you know, is it gonna be looking, like, those are the things that I'm concerned about as we look at, that we don't miss an opportunity to really reflect the growing demands of our own workforce in the complex as well as serving the public.
I guess what I heard you say, John, I think we can deal with everything except the big one that you just said is, you know, you want to double-check that this additional space is needed, correct?
Yes, and that the functionality is what we really should have.
All right. Dave, is there a way he can meet with that, whoever went through this process?
Well, let me, let me address a couple of things Councilman said and, and answer your question. Number one, we, we're still in preliminary planning, pre-engineering, we haven't designed anything, so just so you know, they're putting blocks here and we're, we're, we're still dealing in block design and just, just trying to figure out what it looks like. I can't honestly tell you that it's gonna be the number of square foot it is, I'm looking at a financial strategy that is able to address the renovation of this building. I know that public utilities will pay 50% of the renovation of this building, and I'm looking to reduce costs on our new building such that I'm offsetting a lion's share of the renovation cost for this building within the current CIP that you've already appropriated. So, I, I still have a lot of financial work to do to right-size. We're going to be able to, first of all, incorporate moving our data center out of a basement, but every day, we move deeper into the cloud, every day we reduce our server volume, we, we are embracing that which is being offered in the technology industry, and we are getting great service out of that movement. So, our investments in technology are not incorporating quite the server replacement volume that we have, so our footprint of a data center will be significantly smaller than we ever thought it would be just by virtue of the technology that's emerging every, every day. Things like a fitness center, we have invested as a, as a city in a huge, in the largest parks and recreation system of any city that I can find, and you all should be very proud of that. And, and we have amazing rec centers, and we have, we have amazing parks, and we have amazing trails, and we, we do encourage our workforce to put on their tennis shoes and move around throughout the campus and to, we will invest in some pathways and some more lighting and some additional aspects. Do I really think we should, we consider it, but I'm not sure that the things that we offer them throughout the, the entire city doesn't, doesn't provide for our workforce ability, just like everybody else, when they get off work, the ability to, to find their recreation, to take their gym bag and go on to one of our rec centers and things. I'm not, I'm not being debatable here, I'm just telling you that don't discount what you got in an amazing system that you've already invested in and that we maintain every day.
I'll have to come back on that. For one, I wasn't talking about a fitness center. We have in our building 300 and something people. We have two showers and a locker room, which is also a restroom. I mean, that is what I was referring to, not duplicating hard footprint, that's relatively soft footprint for people who bike to work, and we have some people who do, they come to the office, they take their shower, they put their clothes on, and they go to work, and they bike home. That's a different, I wasn't talking about a fitness center, I'm talking about just the very bare bones of that, and that's not uncommon in a lot of offices, because it is a small footprint. But getting back to, because often we talk about the requirement, we're looking at this and saying, which option do you like? But the option that we like would be dependent upon what the real requirement from square footage is, independent of how it's configured, because you can configure 70,000 square feet a lot of ways. I'm trying to understand fundamentally what is the requirement, because each square foot is $257 or $270 or $280, $180, we don't know that for certain, plus the debt service, so it's one and a half times that at least. So that's what I'm thinking of, so every square foot counts, no matter which option we pick, because it's gonna be just a different layout. So I'm trying to say, before we can make a decision on is it that building, you can say, hey, I like that selection, 1A or 1B or 2C, that's not the same, now I know where I want it to be, but how much of it I want it to be, 70,000, 150,000, 110,000, I don't want to think that we're making that decision when we're picking the, the general location or not endorsing the square footage because you yourself says, we don't know what that is. I think we need to understand how that number gets derived.
Well, sir, as Mr. Nicholas said, he has met with all the departments, he's met with all the... with all the constitutional officers in this building, he has met with the leadership of the council, I believe it was the Vice Mayor and Councilman Wood, and myself, and a couple of my deputy city managers, so that we could take a look at what we had originally projected versus a good conversation about how we service the council and how we service the city manager's office associated with it. We did the same thing in Patty's office and the staff in here, and we did the same thing in the city attorneys. So we re-verified that which we originally thought would be the requirement, and as Tom presented, it changed 900 square feet. Now, there were puts and takes, believe me, some got added on and some got detracted. There was a heavy scrutiny that was applied to that, and we have that listing, I think that listing is available to you all, we will provide it again in Friday's packet, and if you would like to have a laydown of why we got this number of square feet projected over this many years for this particular office and the growth of that, I'm happy to display that to you.
I guess what I'm a little bit disappointed in is that there's 11 of us here, I don't ever remember delegating, why didn't all 11 of us get the benefit of having this experience that the mayor and Councilman Wood had? And collectively, understand that. Now it comes here and saying, here's the pretty pictures.
I usually want to trouble.
I think you should pick one of these, when I don't have the same common reference point that everybody else has, but we're the ones loving this bill on the public, and we're telling the public that this is a higher priority than other stuff that they think they might need and why that is. And I'm just telling you, I can't tell you I have that level of confidence, my experience tells me that you cannot ask bureaucracies themselves to define the leanest requirement for space. It's just not true.
I'm going to suggest, Dave, that you make, have a presentation available to any council member who would like to attend to verify how these numbers were determined, and just alert the council if they would like to come. Bobby, dive.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I just want to thank the staff and the architects and all the people that were involved in the civic engagement things. It was very productive, it was very good. And I also want to thank the people, the citizens, that showed up and participated. And I think there was a lot of tremendously good information, a lot of questions came up that, you know, really deserve scrutiny. But getting back, if I recall, there was somebody that brought up the question about why we needed the additional feet of footage, and I believe, was there a mention that we were going to be able to go out, and we have a lot of satellite units throughout the city, and that we would be able to maybe shut them down and then bring them on campus? Was that an answer that I recall that was out there?
Yes, sir, that is a component.
And more, so, right now, the IT department is in approximately 17 different buildings around the campus, not by choice, but because of, part of it is functional and part of it, there's just not space for them in building two. And so there's a lot of consolidation if we renovate building one and bringing IT into one building, which then gives us other options for those buildings that they're in, either repurposing those or taking some of them down. There's also consolidation in bringing Taylor Adams and the purchasing group out of a leased building over and across the street into the city hall. There's the city attorneys that are in building 23 across the street, consolidating them with city attorney, and then there's the risk management group, which is in building 22 across the street that is separated from their department. So all of those consolidations, some of them free up leased space, some of them give us more space to bring other people in off leases, and some of them would enable us to take a building down. There's a lot of ripple to being able to consolidate.
And I think at this point, I think one of the reasons that we went ahead and canceled the additional meeting was that we actually cleaned enough information to move forward. And I really believe that the public bought in to the fact that we really have to do something, that the condition of building one really necessitated something that we had to move on quickly for a lot of reasons, potential health problems with employees. If we could at least agree in now on concept to, you know, move forward in a direction, and I think a lot of the details about the footage will, you know, rectify itself over time, you know, as we go forward. But the thing is, you know, I just think we are at the point right now that we need a direction at least to move forward to get the process going, you know, maybe agree on the plan, and then, you know, the devil in the details will, you know, iron itself out over time, and, you know, and probably better justify itself or maybe unjustify itself over time. But I think that, you know, we have an immediacy situation here to at least give a direction to move forward.
Jim would have given that.
Yeah, the one thing I'd like to also do is commend the staff on the selection of the architect, because some of the questions that John was talking about specifically, Mosley has done quite a few of these things, and I think the one that I saw that y'all did was Farmville, which you'd think Farmville's a pretty small town. Their council chambers, the way it was designed, it's got all the 21st century tech in it for a small town, which is the kind of stuff, frankly, as you know, it keeps changing every year. And so I think the thing that gives me a little bit more comfort is the fact that we have, you know, outside experts that are taking a look at this, and while we may be kind of focused on what we think needs to happen, and the staff maybe, we've got folks who've done this in other places saying, well, this is okay for this year, but you need to be thinking forward, which kind of then goes to what Bobby was talking about in the whole process of how you get from this square footage to that square footage all the way up to 30, 40, 50, 60 years from now, depending on the life cycle of a building, which I think he says is a 50-year building.
Great, great point. Okay, Barbara?
Well, Bob and Jim both made comments, I was thinking about making, but I think one of the critical things that we did was when we realized after that first meeting that everybody loved the location here, and this is where we want to stay. But I think having that opportunity to even consider a move was kind of interesting, because we found out how much folks really do like this complex and the location and value it. And so I think that was a great exercise, but we also learned a lot, and I think people came to really appreciate what we have here with this overall campus. But as we, and I think the process was very good, and it gave everybody this opportunity to come in and really think about those things. But as we go along, I'm assuming we're going to maybe have some interim reports about what the architects are coming up with, so we can look at some of these things, good points that John brought up that we, you know, we may consider. So once we say, yes, go ahead, the next time we see it is not going to be when it's complete, we're going to be able to see some interim.
I mean, if this was just a normal CIP that wasn't such a publicly important project, we wouldn't have had the planning study, and we would move forward, and the very first piece of design work in actual design that the architect does is the detailed space requirements and program study, of which they've done a lot, but then they'll start to pull concepts together, and we'll come back to you in whatever format you would like, to start to look at what other features we might want to put in the building, what those space requirements are, and obviously constrained by what Mr. Hanson can afford to give us to do that, that's a big piece of it. If, you know, his financial limitations will certainly help us right-size the building.
Very good, and I think what I'd like to suggest, counsel, we have had one firm recommendation of option two, noting that we do not mess up Mary Russo's garden, and at the same time, and Ruth's, everyone's, the city's garden, how are you going, the volunteer garden. But it seems, also was said that it was recommended by the public that came to this meeting, is option two. I would suggest if it's okay with everyone at the table, we move forward with option two, and then we see what you bring back next. Everybody have seen nods of heads? We're okay, let's move on. Thank you very much. All right. Any city council comments?
The, you know, I sit on the 457 board, you know, this is the extra employees trust fund that we sit on for their extra 457 retirement plans, and we are the board we met last week, and we have voted to proceed, not make the final decision, because that's with the council body itself, but to do the additional homework, to bring it back, to move the fiduciary responsibility that we now hold as that board and move that to VRS. There's a lot of reasons the returns are competitive, the costs are significantly lower, and you know, nowadays, everything on these accounts is getting down to, putting them down to fees, it's an index fund, and giving people some more choices, we have a real estate fund, in fact, so it gives people more choices at less cost, and it doesn't totally remove all, but substantially our fiduciary responsibility. And I think one of the biggest benefits, other than what employees gain, is also giving back the labor opportunity cost of the city employees, including Patty, who spends a tremendous amount of time on the CEB complement, and the employees have really benefited from her leadership on that board. Sometime probably December, I think we're gearing a presentation in advance, and then a vote in December, so that then we can make the wickets to make that transition take place in the summer. But this will give employees more educational services, more access, more IT flexibility, and more options at a lower cost. And so we look forward to bringing that back to you, that's just on your planning calendar.
Thank you.
And I had one other item, what, maybe it can be discussed later, but what are we doing, or have we withdrawn, or what is this scoop with the Amazon headquarters?
We're going into closed session.
Okay, very good. And just as an update, because it happened yesterday, for those of you follow, the Senate Armed Services Committee did adopt the authorization, which is now with the House, we'll have to go to joint committee in October, nothing moves fast in Washington.
It was encouraging.
The Senate Appropriations Committee, which is the key, has not voted and adopted an appropriation bill, and as I shared with the mayor earlier, that is still subject to the Budget Control Act of 2012 as amended, so unless that changes, it doesn't make a difference how much they appropriate, no more money's coming. And the CR expires on 8 December, and there was $7.4 billion of disaster relief that went to FEMA and $7.4 billion that went to HUD itself for community housing development issues. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Barbara.
Yes, the draft of the ITA update plan is out, and I hope you all will look at it. There will be stakeholders briefing, meeting next, Wednesday night, Wednesday night of next week, so that we can get comments in from the public early on, if there's some real issues with what's proposed. Then it's going to be briefed to council October 10. And so I just sort of giving you a heads up, so please take time to look at this draft so that you can have some input when they do give you the brief, and then, of course, after you see it, and there will be another public meeting that evening, and then if everything is okay, it'll go forward to the Planning Commission in November and back here in December for approval. I think there are a lot of really neat things in there, and I hope you all will take time to look at it and be ready to give your input. Also, the letter that was in our packet to the Corps regarding the Sandbridge replenishment project, that we move forward, there won't be any federal money, but we do have the money and the SSD to move forward, and so that's what will happen, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Pull up on that question.
Is the lack of federal money due to just where we are in the budget cycle, or is there a change in the philosophy of the committee or the administration not to fund those types of projects in the future?
That, OMB has never been staunch supporter of those commitments that they made with regards to shore replenishment, and have been that way for, since I left the Corps. I mean, it's been that way for a while. There's just not funding being allocated to the Corps for them to put it into their work plan and for them to distribute that inside the current normal plan.
Just as a side, for those of you who were here at the time and those of you who weren't, when we started this project back in the 90s, it was to be 65% federal and 35% local.
The good old days.
Right. And, you know, we did the SSD with Sandbridge, and they were just so cooperative and so forth, but of course, that SSD didn't begin to do it, so then we followed it up with the TIF as a fallback. But it made such a difference in Sandbridge by having these Sandbridge projects, that you look at the appreciation of the property values there, so really, the SSD is covering just about all of it, and here we're able to do it without the federal money, which I think is really amazing.
Good story.
It's a great success story, but I give so much credit to the folks at Sandbridge who really made this possible by really pushing for that SSD and making all those things happen back in the 90s. When you look at this being a five-mile beach that we're able to replenish on a fairly regular schedule without that federal money, I think it's phenomenal. So, but that's going to happen probably next summer, but sometime during next calendar year.
Very good. Jessica and then Shannon, then we'll move on, I hope.
I just have two things. On Sunday, this past Sunday, the Elizabeth River Fest happened, which was the first time it's happened in Virginia Beach. They got rained out in the middle of it, but it was really successful, and they kept going through the rain, but I just wanted to give a shout-out to Marjorie Jackson and her team for putting on the festival. It was really fun, it was really interactive for families and kids of all ages. And then I'd meant to bring this up sooner, but there were a lot of changes with it. On Friday, the 22nd, I was invited to be a speaker on the TomTom Founders Festival Panel for New Virginia Cities, which is a panel for leaders that had been, were elected under 30 in the last couple of years, and I'll be joined by Vice Mayor Jasmine Grove of Hopewell, Virginia, and City Councilman Lee Volger, who is in Danville.
Very good, very good. Shannon?
Tomorrow morning in Chesapeake at 8 o'clock is the Opportunity Inc.'s annual board meeting and annual meeting to talk about regional workforce development here in Hampton Roads. Governor will be there, I'll be there, or I'll be there, then the governor will be there, I don't know which one you want to say.
Governor will be there with US like that.
So that's tomorrow, I'm hoping to get some information to bring back with us on further reporting. Next, on Thursday at 9 o'clock is the SWAM Business Forum at the Sandler Center, and that's us making our efforts to further diversify our contracts within the city, and it starts at 9 at the Sandler, so we're breaking down those barriers and doing a good job there, Taylor, right? And then Thursday, the 28th, the Community Services Board is having Community Partner Day, and that's going to be held at the Hilton at the Oceanfront, and that's Donette and her team breaking down even more barriers so we can do more work for the people in our community that need it.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to commend Shannon, we had the Lynn Haven Corridor presentation today, and it looks awesome, so thank you for leading and spearheading that effort.
Thank you, and I'm sad I missed that, I was bummed, I was texting Jim on the way here, have they given that yet? Because I wanted to see the presentation, I was at the doctor with my son.
Video to Ben's comments.
Yep, very good stuff. Okay, counsel, I'm going to take a little risk here, everything seemed to be pretty much alright except for one planning item, and Shannon, I believe you've worked something out there?
Yes, the SXCW properties, the applicant for the car wash on Holland and on Holland Road, their attorney has requested a deferral, so we were going to defer that, and both attorneys from both sides have been notified, and they have reached out to all the parties involved and asked them to let them know that we're not going to be here that long.
I'd just like to compliment you for some great work right there, you probably saved us a little bit of time.
On item three, I'm abstaining, and I have a letter I want to read. Thank you.
So everything else is unconcerned, is anyone object to that? Great work, everybody.
Well done, Shannon. I think.
What was your item for abstaining again, John? Oh, that was the J, F18, right? Is that going to be a defer indefinitely?
For right now, because we don't know the date, just, yes, sir. We're going to have another meeting indefinitely.
Okay, counsel, bear with me, this is lengthy. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711a. Tota regia is intended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711a3, Princess Anne District, Lynn Haven Bayside District. Public contract, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711a29. Amazon recruitment. Public funds investment, discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the governmental unit would be adversely affected pursuant to Section 2.2-3711a6, Amazon recruitment. Legal matters. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating. open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7, City of Virginia versus Wichita Real Property. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment of promotion, performance demotions, salaries displeting, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Counsel appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Denver?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Henley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Vice President Jones?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.